Is seven oh four, time to call this meeting door. Everyone please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, uh, opening prayer, Mr. Taylor, if you'd like to lead us in that, please.
Uh, dear Lord, allow us to uh, use common sense and, you know, think of the people of this community, all of them, and make the best decisions possible with the information provided, keep cool heads, and uh, keep, keep everybody safe, please, during the inclement weather and the COVID. We appreciate you, we love you, and uh, in your name we pray, amen.
My name is Cole.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Sherman, Mr. Dunphy?
Here.
Ms. Grant?
Here.
Mr. Booth?
Welcome back, Susan, here.
Ms. Jones?
Um, motion to excuse Ms. Jones and Mr. Sherman?
Second. Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
The minutes from last regular meeting is being corrected. Uh, Susan will have those ready for us here over the next few days due to an error with um, Mr. Booth's thinking. I would like to uh, we are to the auditor, I would like a motion to amend the agenda to add Mr. Wasserman for a Athens County Land Bank uh, report to, you know, put him at the business organizational comments.
I'll look and remove him up right now, if I can get him right now, that way we can get him and he can get on his way.
It's okay, you want to be before Taylor, so.
Call me out.
Oh yeah, you want to go first.
Yeah, you want to go first.
Alright, Mr. Wasserman, uh, you're at the floor, George.
Alright.
That is my central floor.
Central floor.
Second.
I did, yep.
Uh, Ms. Grant?
Yes, Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dunphy?
Yes.
It's kind of you to uh, put me first and then have some time for me here and your busy agenda. Thank you all for having me, I appreciate it. Um, try to come every once in a while, get a little bit of an update, so you know what we're going, what we're doing, in terms of both the treasurer's office and the land bank. So uh, you have in front of you an annual report that we did, kind of a report to the community, let people know how the money that we're using, being spent, and you know, what some of our highlights were for the two thousand twenty year. I feel like the stuff that's in that report is fantastic, but we've done so much more since then in two thousand twenty one, that stuff's almost a distant memory. When I came here the first time, two thousand eighteen, Land Bank hadn't done anything, it was just kind of an idea. And we were in the process of trying to acquire properties, which mostly happens through foreclosures for delinquent taxes. Then I came back uh, sometime in, I think in two thousand twenty. By that time, we had done a lot of demos, torn down a number of houses that needed to go, uh, but we hadn't seen the rehab work that we're now starting to do. So the land bank operates in eleven out of the fourteen townships so far in the county. Not that we would not operate in those other three, we just haven't had very many projects in Burn Township or Carthage Township. The focus of our activity has been the city of Nelsonville, Village of Gloucester, all of Cribble Township, Dover Township, in particular, the Village of Chancery. Uh, Nelsonville in particular has benefited from a lot of the work that we've done. Uh, Nelsonville, of course, had an aging population base uh, that left a lot of houses abandoned through nothing other than the folks who owned and died. They would die and uh, they would, uh, houses would sit there, the next generation either was not in town or was not interested in taking the house, and in many cases, those houses sat for eight, ten, fifteen, in some cases, four years. So uh, with the help of uh, the former city manager, the current city manager, and the code director, we've identified tremendous number of those houses and been able to address them. So thus far, since its inception, the land bank has acquired thirty-one properties that's addressed, it's not parcels, it's many more parcels. But thirty-one properties within the city of Nelsonville. We uh, sadly had to demolish eleven of them. Sometimes houses are just too far gone. You know, you just can't do anything with a house that's gotten wet, or a house that's gotten vandalized to the point where there's just nothing left to save. We have really been blessed with having a lot of rehab activity happen in Nelsonville. So in this last year, we've seen not only houses get demolished, but we've seen some new houses get started on those very same parcels. And some houses that were good enough to save have been rehabbed. So we have about, what is it, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine rehabs, either completed or going on right now. Those would include uh, four ninety-five Patton Street, three fifty-four Chestnut, which is a fantastic story. One of your firefighters was able to buy the house at three fifty-four Chestnut. It's really still in good condition, even though it's been abandoned for maybe five or six years. Uh, he and his wife are living in the house while they're rehabbing it. Uh, seven eighty-four Poplar and seventy-seven, seven seventy Poplar were two drug houses, sitting side by side, they were in terrible condition. Uh, Rex McHolmes came to us with a plan. He has since demolished both of those houses and he intends to build a new one in the center of that parcel for uh, his adult child. Uh, one forty-one Monroe, which we sold to some guy, uh, it was probably a bad decision. I'm just kidding. Uh, he, he's definitely going to get that house done here pretty soon, he tells me.
He is. He's giving a definition of what that is.
Two seventeen Harper, uh, builder and landlord, Jeff Leavitt, I'm sure you know. Uh, he, he's got some houses right in that area, he's going to build a brand new house on that plot of land. Up on High Street, a lot of activity up on the High Street. Uh, those six uh, thirty-seven and six fourteen High, taken over by a woman who lives up there named Marcy Danny, she's a schoolless driver for the Nelsonville yard schools. She's rehabbed one completely gorgeous inside now. One of her adult children, you know, live there, and she's starting work on the one on the other side of her house for another one of her adult children. We also have three other houses along High Street that were, uh, we already have, and two more that I think we're going to get out of bankruptcy that happened recently. So we're essentially remaking that whole section of High Street from Borough Boulevard down, you know, probably seven or eight houses down, uh, what was really, really rough, dilapidated houses, where there's a lot of bad activity going on. And I think that that area of town's going to become a place people want to go. One thirty Jefferson, I'm just so tickled that we were able to get that house into the hands of some folks who are professional rehabbers. It's going to be a rental, but it's going to be a high-quality rental. It's a two-family house, been sitting there for probably four or five years. Uh, really, it was not in great shape, but they were willing to take it on. They're going to spend probably fifty grand on that structure to make it a nice house and, and we'll have hopefully a high-quality rental there. And then uh, six eleven Patton, and we've had some stumbles with that one, but I do believe that that house is going to get uh, rehabbed as well. All in total, twenty-two parcels have been put back on the tax rolls that have been long-term delinquent parcels. And so we're really just very, very pleased with what we've been able to accomplish in Nelsonville. Can't say enough about Becky, because Becky uh, not only keeps us informed of the houses that we need to go on, but is able to get the city uh, to, to do the necessary work of protecting these houses in between the time they become abandoned and the time when the foreclosures get done, so we can take them over. We've boarded up a lot of houses, so that the damage doesn't keep happening. And I have to tell you, we don't get that kind of support in every place that we do business. A lot of the other villages don't have the staff and the money to do that. And uh, we're like legally prohibited from going into a house before we actually own it. So the land bank itself, the county, that we can't enter the house and say, oh, we need to do this, this, and this right now. Uh, we're hoping that that law's going to change here next year or so, but it hasn't changed yet. But you guys, as the municipality, you have rights to uh, remediate immediate dangers to the public that we don't have. Um, we have a current pipeline of ten other properties in the city in which uh, foreclosures are ongoing right now. And then Becky has a new list that we're going to start working here uh, in the next week or so, to get a bunch more cases going. Uh, I don't have too much else to say, except that one of the most controversial things about the land bank when we started was the way that it's funded. Land Bank is funded only through the collection of delinquent taxes. When someone comes in and pays their taxes late, we charge a ten percent fee by law. That fee gets split up three different ways. A quarter of it goes to the prosecutor for a fund that he uses to uh, help collect more delinquent taxes. Quarter of it goes to me as the treasurer. We have a fund that supports the uh, creation of delinquent payment plans, supports our research and trying to find tax cheats, that sort of thing. And the other half of that, uh, five percent of the amount that's collected through delinquent taxes goes to the land bank. And that money used to come to the individual municipalities, the school district, your, your general fund, uh, the township trustees. And when the commissioners created the land bank, excuse me, I'm saving off the scenes here. Uh, when the commissioners created the land bank, the state allowed them to take a half of that fee and direct it to the land bank. It was kind of controversial, because some entities like school districts didn't really see the point of that, they would rather have that, that flow of money. And I always said when we started this, that if the land bank started to become self-sufficient, we would cut the amount of money that we're taking. We went ahead and did that back in August. And the land bank passed a resolution to cut the amount of de-tax funding that we're taking from five percent down to two and a half percent. And every confidence that we'll be doing that for all of two thousand twenty-one as well. So uh, Nelsonville's seen the benefit of this, but actually can be paying less for it. Uh, I'm sure if you look at the settlement statement that you got just a couple of weeks ago, you'll see that the amount that's going to the land bank is half of the amount of the de-tax we're dealing with. So, because we're trying to do more with less, we have some other sources of funding. The state has been very kind to us in the current budget. It allocated half a billion dollars to land banks statewide. A hundred thousand of that will automatically come to Athens County in the next year, and then we'll be able to apply for uh, more of it as time goes on. Uh, that's just for our ordinary demo. We're also doing a lot of what we call brownfield projects, which are projects that have environmental issues that we can remediate, such as uh, abandoned gas stations. Going in and addressing situations with abandoned gas stations, where there might be contaminated ground, tanks underground. We can get grants to take care of those situations, pull those tanks out, take care of the soil, we've done quite a few of these now. That's a really good thing. Uh, buildings that are full of asbestos is another major focus. So as we go forward here in the next year or so, we'll be looking for more of those projects. That's really all I have to say. I was hoping that uh, I would be able to just come and give you a quick talk, drop off the annual report, and if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Yep, and I have any questions, Paul?
No, we appreciate everything you have.
Absolutely.
And let me just say again, you know, if there are uh, houses or structures or, uh, you know, some of this new money will be available to address commercial buildings, which we weren't really able to do before. Uh, you know, just hook me up, athenscountytreasurer.com, my email's right there on the page, you can just click it, email me. Uh, we're really, or you can talk to Becky and Becky as a, you know, the pipeline lead. Uh, we're always looking for projects and email. For the first time, we have staff. We just hired a manager who's going to be full-time for this next year. Uh, he's been with us for a year as an American volunteer, and now he's going to be full-time staff. So we really feel like we're going to hit our stride and be able to do more. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, Taylor.
So, to the auditor slash treasurer's report, Mr. Sappington?
Good evening, everybody. I will start um, with the treasurer's report for September twenty twenty-one. Hopefully, everybody got a copy as he put in. Uh, Michael couldn't make it tonight, the treasurer, uh, he had work scheduled for six, uh, so I told him I'd make sure to read for him. Um, I just wanted to pass that message along. You'll see on the first page, uh, just total account balances on September thirtieth, three point four eight nine uh, million. Higher than usual for us, which is a nice number to look at. Uh, on the next page is just our record of investments, the accounts that are interest-bearing. Uh, they're kind of combined uh, in the way they look here, but they're actually two separate interest-bearing accounts. And you'll see the interest at one thousand two hundred and seventy-seven and thirty-one cents, about, well, about one twelfth of what it was last year. So the Fed not doing us any favors in that regard. Although we see the significant interest reduction on things like our sewer plant one, so I guess it's uh, win-lose. So you'll see his reconciliation on page three, I think we're at, is this page three? Um, two point oh five oh in uh, charges to the accounts, uh, and then two point one eight five uh, seventy-two twenty-four cents in deposits. And then, of course, he breaks it down here between general and payroll. And the bank balance at the end of the month for the ten fifty sweep account, I'm sorry, nineteen seventy-two sweep account. And on the next page is uh, the record of book postings, which would come from myself and Judy, the deputy auditor. And he did have a couple adjustments about two-thirds of the way down the page. Um, in fact, uh, one of them was auditor and treasurer's fees in the uh, property taxes, which I'll just admit, I didn't get posted uh, correctly, and so he has an adjustment, and we have since fixed, so. And then that, once you adjust for that, we have a difference of zero dollars, so. The treasurer said today that it was one of the easiest ones he did, despite being one of the busiest months for expenses, so I think that's good news. And that's the full treasurer's report. So for the auditor's report, um, you guys have the link to it on, in your emails, and it's here up on the screen, as well as on my Facebook, if anybody needs it. Uh, so this is September two thousand twenty-one, this picture was borrowed from the fire department. And uh, I think photo credit goes to Steve Mitchell. So actually, I can't read that, I'm clearly getting old. So, can you see?
Okay.
So, you're going smaller.
I'm trying, man.
So I put generally the city's, cities revenues out and past expenses in the month of September. You can see the total revenues there, total expenses. Um, these figures uh, represent extremely large increases from previous months because of the wastewater treatment plant project. One check we wrote was one point five five million to uh, is our contractor?
Kirk Brothers.
Kirk Brothers, Kirk Brothers. So that's just a, represents how that project has, um, I need you to scroll back up, I'm sorry, has completely taken off. And then, sorry, we, the computer has a mind of its own today. Uh, also of note, uh, we received our second distribution of property tax collections collected here by Mr. County Auditor Rick Wasserman. Those funds impacted are the general fund, the street levy, the two thirty street levy, uh, and Parks and Recreation Fund. And they just informational, these distributions take place in the spral, spring and fall, which means we're finished for twenty twenty-one. This included almost three thousand in our first distribution of delinquent water and tax assessments, which was for us a, a strong uh, start. I consider, because that money could just sit levied against the property, as Rick knows very well. But we actually saw payments on about half of those accounts, uh, which was good. So just below that, major fund balances, seven hundred eighty-three thousand, seven hundred twenty-three, seventy-six, the general fund. There's our combined street funds. Um, one thing um, of note for those street funds, you'll see that balance increasing over the next year or so, is uh, Operation Scott, Jason, and really you guys, two city council, are getting ready for what will be, hopefully, right, a very large Canal Street project in twenty twenty-three, um, which will, twenty-four, I'm sorry, which will require a large city match. Small compared to the whole project, but large for our funds, so we're building towards that. Capital Water Sewer, um, capital fund's still waiting on a large distribution from the state, so it's a little lower there. And then, just want to go a little bit, that's, I have this message on here for several months in a row, we've been creeping towards healthy balances on all funds. If you keep going for me, Scott. Here's our statement of cash position. Looking really small, you know, from my eyes. But this just has our fund balances, it's also in your guys' email, I can give you a copy. And then I'll just finish up with uh, uh, improvements in our financial position and our clean audit, uh, were covered positively by The Messenger and Daily. All write-ups were downgraded, that's supposed to say, and removed, um, which was awesome. First time in many years, I wanted to thank the department heads, especially um, Jason and Harry, and Chief Barber, who both had key roles, the city manager, city council, deputy auditor, everybody, for that audit, and um, oh, I said I'd bring the census proclamation, here's the official, if anybody wants to see it. Oh, that's not it.
No, it's gone.
That's not it. We got a fancy one this, oh my gosh, he gave me lots of paperwork, man. We got a fancy proclamation this time. So there's officially saying we're city in Nelsonville, that of course happened, I think since the last meeting, right?
It's thirty days though, right? We're still village.
Well, if you want to get really complicated. You want to get complicated, they have thirty days waiting periods on each one. Um, and then the last thing was, uh, I just wanted to notify council in person, um, and you'll probably read about it in the next couple of days. Um, we found out officially from the IRS, the almost four hundred thousand dollars we owed them, the city owed, due to basically negligence, um, and incompetence from the prior administration and the fee, the, the, well, yes, the fee three is what I meant to say, but the theft, um, what, we officially got notified, they have relieved the city of all of it. So if you would think back to um, March twenty twenty, uh, you guys authorized uh, my office and Scott to begin negotiations with them. It involved too many hours on hold, on the phone, phone calls, conference calls, paperwork, appeals, several agents and examiners, not all of them, the nicest people I've ever met. And uh, it was just a lot of work. And then, of course, we owed twenty-five thousand to the state for the same reason, from the same people. The state, earlier this year, forgave everything but fifty dollars, and the IRS forgave three hundred eighty-two, seven hundred sixty-one, and eleven pennies. Uh, basically meaning we owe nothing more than already paid. And now we uh, owe nothing, so. Felt like a really good, really good day for us, and I came running down to Scott's office when I opened the mail and and we celebrated, I guess, so. That's why my knee hurts, jumping around the building. So, and I just wanted to make sure I said, thank the city manager for his assistance, Deputy Auditor Judy Smith, who does so much for this place for uh, nothing other than because she just loves her job. And is just a hard worker and is good at it. And then I guess I should thank the Eternal Revenue Service for their assistance and work and their uh, coming around to our way of seeing things. And Miss County Treasurer, Rick Wasserman, for all his help on the census, now that he's here, thank him in person.
Well, you're treasurer, not your auditor earlier.
Yeah. A little bump there.
Got promoted, I didn't even know.
That's funny. Um, that's it, thanks, guys.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you, Taylor.
Okay, don't. Motion to accept Taylor's auditor slash treasurer's report.
So move.
Oh, second.
I agree.
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Alright, now we don't have a mayor's court report, because we haven't had mayor court for a while. Any citizens' comments out there?
The pressure drags, I'll look at you.
No pressure. Um, business and organizational comments. I will say this, um, there is a, hold on a second here. There is a Nelsonville food cupboard fundraiser event at the Elks Lodge on Saturday, October thirtieth, twelve PM to three PM. If you can make it out, it's a live auction, a lucky ticket, silent auction. Um, if you can make it out, that is a great cause to help fund. I got to be a part of that one weekend, it's pretty amazing what they do. They do a lot that people don't know about. So if you can get out and help them uh, raise money, that would be great, so. That's all I have for that. Does anybody have anything else? Okay, um, let's go with committee discussions.
We have a finance meeting. We talked about um, the twenty twenty-two revenue, revenue projections, a change in the fee for a full water shut-off procedure, and the Rita program.
Anyone else? So we had a planning meeting, we talked about uh, how it is and
bricks.
And bricks, yes, and bricks and sidewalks. Correct. Thank you. Alright, we are to department updates.
Didn't we have a utility?
We did have, oh, we did have a utility meeting, we did discuss, uh, we have to raise the sewer rates eight percent to keep up. Uh, we missed an increase earlier in the year, um, to keep up with the funding that is needed to s, to take care of the sewer plant, to have our matching month funds, so we did, that, that legislation should be in tonight's uh, in tonight's legislature, so. And that was it, it was a five-minute meeting.
We have finance tomorrow, too, right?
Correct.
I think we're going to decide that, I don't know if the cable and Scott's ready.
I'm okay either way, I mean.
Carla asked earlier, I don't know if you saw her email, she asked if it would be helpful to wait a week. Um, I mean.
We probably give a ninety-five percent product in a week, it's right in about eighty.
Yeah, and it's not cleaned up yet, huh?
You'll take eight.
And then ninety-five next week.
Sure. I don't know.
It's not fin, it, yeah, it's just not, I mean, they're, they're, everybody's working really quick on it, but.
Two chiefs. Everybody else is done, hands in the air, Jason's hand.
Too much celebrating in the, in the city building, maybe, in the
Morale is big here. Not to pay morale.
Alright.
Alright.
I, I would say, yeah, so I mean, we can go over what we have, that way there won't be so much the next time.
Sure.
And it is at six thirty.
Tomorrow night?
Yep.
Okay. Alright, now we're to department updates. Ms. Barber, is it your turn?
Yes, I'm just going to say that my report's going to be really short. Out of the four weeks since I last seen you, about a week and a half was focused on census. It was non-stop census work, and that was my focus. It was nice to get out and talk to um, the community. I've seen a lot in the community, which was nice, um, and met a lot of people. Um, and I'm just really happy and, and pretty excited that we got the job done, and we were successful, so um, I want to thank Rick Wasserman. If it wasn't for Rick, our community wouldn't look half as good as it does today. I mean, he does a lot of work, and it doesn't matter what time of day I call him, if I found a prop, you know, piece of property, he's like, yep, let's, let's get on this. He's just very eager to, to help Nelsonville, so I just want to say I appreciate everything that Rick does and the land bank team um, for the city. If it wasn't for him, I don't think we would be where we're are today, where we are today. I just want to put out a reminder that uh, you need to get your lawns ready for the winter. Most season will be over, October thirty-first. Um, so get your grass mown, so it looks nice as spring. Keep it eight, eight inches and under, um. Let's see, last week, we secured a house on Walnut, it was um, it was a home that had been out of compliance with city code for a long time, and um, we secured it, and it's a successful, success story, I just can't talk about the whole thing today. Because it's still under pending investigation, but I will bring the story up when I can. The good news, good news for a house on Walnut Street. And let's see, I issued six citations and twenty-three warnings in the last three weeks. So folks need to start applying the city code. Um, we're going to have mayor's court next month, so we're probably going to have a lot of people cited in for code. So it's just another warning to the community. If you get a letter from me, please respond. If you're unable to take care of the issue, call me. Come in, email me, tell me what's going on in your life. I work with people. But if I don't hear from you, you get a citation, unfortunately, so um, that's it.
What types of citations have they been?
Trash and grass, a lot of trash.
And just to let everyone know, she doesn't drive the red rocket anymore, she's in a white truck, so. Just because you're used to seeing that little red
Just because you're used to seeing that little red truck coming around town and you say you, she don't see her out, there's a reason she's driving an undercover vehicle. So, but she is out there, so.
I had comments that Coke must have went on vacation all summer because they haven't seen her.
They haven't seen you, yeah, exactly. I forgot to tell people that, so. Thank you, Ms. Barber, for everything you do.
Yep.
Yeah, I have a question.
Yeah.
How are the grocery carts to come along?
Is it covered? No. Um, as a matter of fact, Kroger's is not responding, so I've been impounding, I, I impounded. Probably right around thirty-two carts this summer, and they've already paid three hundred and sixty dollars to get a few of them out of impound. Unfortunately, I, you know.
I just wondered because I had seen a few out and about, so that's.
And I've actually given them more than what their code requires timeframe to, to get them, to pick them up. Um, the code gives them forty-eight hours, and I've given them a week. I've emailed them, sent them a photo, waited for a week, and then went out and rounded them all up, so.
Hey, thank you.
If you go to Kroger, there's not very many carts. If that's what you're asking.
Well, thank you. She's all over the carts. All right, um. Any other department updates? That's it, it's just you tonight, correct?
Yeah.
All right.
Take care.
So we are moving on to some first readings. We're, uh, we're going to move on to ordinance.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot the numbers.
Eighty-six, eighty-seven dash twenty-one, I need someone to, I need someone to introduce it.
This is.
It would be.
I'm sorry. It's a shut-off code in particular.
Okay, I'll introduce.
All right, there it is.
And is this in emergency?
No.
No?
No.
Okay, so that's, uh, what's the next?
It will be the.
It'll be November.
November?
Eight.
November eight?
Can I ask a quick question?
It is November eight.
Do you guys have to vote to amend the agenda before you have it?
Probably.
Yeah.
We gotta add them up or.
Yeah. Uh, motion to amend the agenda and add ordinance eighty-seven dash twenty-one, eighty-eight dash twenty-one, eighty-nine dash twenty-one. Ninety dash twenty-one, resolution twenty-two fifty and resolution twenty-two fifty-one.
So there's a cycle.
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing changes to shut off code and procedure. To require payment of all charges owed plus fees for reconnection. And amending the abatement program to include a two-tier fee structure for the abatement policy. Thirty dollars for five hundred dollars in coverage, fifty dollars for one thousand dollars in coverage.
Yep.
Whereas Nelsonville is setting a shut-off code procedure and adjusting the abatement policy. Whereas this will be in the best interest of the city of Nelsonville and customers to reduce. Lawn leak liabilities and increase the number of shut-off utility accounts. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio. That customers who experience utility service shut-off must now pay their full balance owed. Plus a shut-off fee of seventy-five dollars before service can be reconnected or reinstated. This includes past due balance, most recent amounts of shut-off fee of seventy-five dollars. And all other charges owed at the time of proposed reconnection. Once this payment is made, it is understood that the balance of the customer's account will now go zero dollars to be eligible for reconnection. There shall be a two-tier premium for water loss abatement policies for the city. Thirty dollars for five hundred dollars in coverage, fifty dollars for one thousand dollars in coverage. The abatement policy is a premium paid that covers the policyholder. For up to the coverage amount if their utility bill is excessive due to a leak or wat- water losses then. Do not enact it by council on second reading the eighth day of November two thousand twenty-one.
Thank you. Or is it on? Ordinance eighty-eight dash twenty-one, someone introduce it, please.
I'll introduce.
Thank you.
And ordinance increasing the sewer rates effective January first, two thousand twenty-two. And trash rates effective April first, two thousand twenty-two. Whereas sewer rate must be increased effective January first, two thousand twenty-two. And trash rates effective April first, two thousand twenty-two, to meet the funding requirements. For the new sewer plant and to pass along contractual increases in trash service charges. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio. That effective January first, two thousand twenty-two, the sewer rates are increased as follows. Uh, in town, twenty twenty-one rate was sixteen seventy-four. Twenty twenty-two, it would be eighteen forty-one. Fifteen hundred minimum. Every thousand gallons over the fifteen hundred. For twenty twenty-one was ten dollars and eleven cents. In twenty twenty-two, it will be eleven dollars and twelve cents. Out of town. Uh, fifteen hundred minimum, twenty twenty-one rate was twenty-five dollars and ten cents. Twenty twenty-two rate was twenty-seven dollars and sixty-one cents. For every thousand over fifteen hundred. The twenty twenty-one rate was fifteen dollars and seventeen cents. In twenty twenty-two, it will be sixteen dollars and sixty-nine cents. Uh, Ha- Hocking County Commissioners per one thousand gallons, twenty twenty-one rate was four dollars thirty-two cents. And in twenty twenty-two, it will be four dollars and seventy-four rate, seventy-five cents. Trash rates are increased as follows, from twelve dollars and fifty cents effective April first, two thousand twenty-one. To twelve dollars and sixty-six cents effective. April first, two thousand twenty-two, per customer, per month for curbside refuse. And rubbish collection for one resident or unit and up to. Uh, seven bags. Recycle bin and service included per customer per month for curbside recycling. Two dollars per container per month for optional rental, mobile totter or equivalent. Five dollars per sticker per special rubbish item or extra large bag. Uh, that will be the, uh, passed on second meeting on November the eighth, two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. We roll on, we have one more ordinance, I believe, and, uh. Ordinance eighty-nine dash twenty-one, need someone to introduce it, please. It is. It is.
It'll be.
Eighty-nine twenty-one, okay.
Okay.
There we are.
I'd like to introduce that.
Would like to introduce eighty-nine dash twenty-one, it was, it is the ordinance authorizing appropriation of thirty thousand dollars to the sewer plant.
That is an emergency, right?
Yep. The current emergency camp.
Yeah, we can still read it.
You can read it.
Pass it, it just won't pass on emergency, that's all.
Yep. We'll have to call a special meeting, I know, it'll be very, very contentious there. Okay. When do you want the meeting?
Um, I was gonna be told, uh, so if you want, I can just explain it real quick. The lift station right here behind us has had, uh. Almost daily or twice a day failures for the last thirty days. So we submitted an emergency funding package to the, um, Ohio Public Works folks and they literally granted it overnight. So we submitted it at three o'clock on Thursday, first thing Friday morning or whatever day off was, um, they gave it to us. With that said, we need to execute quickly. So the thirty thousand dollars is our match piece, but without the legislation for these two things, we can't move forward. Accepting these monies to repair the lift station, which all sewage keeps coming out on the ground.
You need it before Monday, since we're already having a front next Monday.
Absolutely. I need it today. Last Friday.
You can have it after finance, it's twenty-four hours.
Sure.
Okay, what time is it?
Five.
Six.
Six thirty, okay.
So say seven thirty.
Whatever.
How long will it take this table, one half hour, um?
Somewhere between there.
So seven.
Yeah, you guys could conceivably call a meeting right now, just. Could the council president call me right now?
Seven thirty?
Seven forty-five.
Definitely seven forty-five.
Have a meeting, special meeting tomorrow night, seven forty-five. Thank you.
Um, I'll introduce the.
Thank you.
And ordinance authorizing an appropriation of thirty thousand dollars to the sewer fund and declaring an emergency. Whereas money needs to be appropriated for improvement to the Nelsonville sewer. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville. Ohio that there be an appropriation of thirty thousand dollars for improvement. To fund number seven fifty, sewer fund seven five zero dash seven six five dash seven zero zero one one sewer collection. Uh, duly enacted by council on second reading. The sixth day of October. All right.
Yep. Right. All right, now we're to resolution twenty-two fifty.
A one reading or a? Two reading? It says suspension.
Resolution.
Resolution is a one reading. We passed the one, one reading.
Yeah, one reading.
Yeah, that's what we set that precedence with, some other things, we were to pass it on one reading.
You'd like to introduce it?
I'll introduce it.
A resolution authorizing city manager Scott Frank to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission's state capital improvement. And or local transportation improvement program and to execute contracts as required and declaring an emergency. Whereas the state capital improvement program and the local transportation improvement program. Both provide financial assistance to political subdivisions for capital improvements to in public infrastructure. And whereas the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, is planning to make capital. Improvements to VFW legislation replacer project. And whereas the infrastructure improvement herein above described is considered to be a priority need for the community. And is a qualified project under the OPWC programs. Now therefore being resolved by the city of Nelsonville. That city manager Scott Frank is hereby authorized to apply to the OPWC for funds as described above. That city manager Scott Frank is authorized to enter into any agreements as may be necessary. And appropriate for obtaining this financial assistance. Newly enacted by council. Um, first reading October twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, any council discussion on this matter?
Uh, just a quick question, um, once we're able to get the, uh, second reading on the last piece of legislation. Legislation, like how quickly will you think the project will?
Less than four months done. So with it being emergency money is the biggest holdup, it's just gonna be the timelines for it to sit up for bid and getting, uh, and then after that, it's just the supply chain issue. So if the park were local, which they're not, I mean, we could potentially be breaking ground in the next three weeks, but. Um, for mercy of supply chain, so it'll be the first piece, this isn't, this piece, and then there's also another one coming up for a different project. It's also very contentious, uh.
Motion to adopt? Second.
Um, Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes. All right. Resolution twenty-two fifty-one, someone to introduce it, please.
I'll introduce it, thank you.
Resolution authorizing the city manager of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio. To apply to the Rural Community Assistance Partnership, R-C-A-B. To submit the electronic application for CB, CBGB Residential Public Infrastructure Grant. The RPIG financing to the Ohio Development Services Agency. For the Phase Three Regional Collection System Improvement Project and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city of Nelsonville needs to complete the project. And whereas the city of Nelsonville does not have the funds available within its budget to finance the project. And it is imperative that the city seek financing from outside program. And whereas the city manager has recommended the passage of this resolution. As an emergency measure as it is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public fees, health, safety, and property. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio. The city manager is hereby authorized to apply to the Ohio Development Services Agency. For CBVG Residential Public Infrastructure Grant financing necessary to finance a portion of the project. The Rural Community Assistance Partnership is hereby authorized. To submit the electronic application to the Ohio Development Services Agency for CBVG Residential Public Infrastructure Grant financing. This resolution shall take effect in the full course, it may apply upon it. Upon final passage as an emergency measure. It is hereby bound and determined that all. Formal actions of this council relating to the adoption of this resolution. Were adopted in an open meeting of this council and that all deliberations of this council. That resulted in such formal actions were in a meeting open to the public. In compliance with all legal requirements, including section one twenty-one point twenty-two of the Ohio Revised Code. Passed then adopted by council of the city of Nelsonville is twenty-fifth day of October, two thousand twenty-one.
All right, any council discussion on the matter? Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Thank you.
Um, Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes. All right, that is all for the legislation.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Uh, we still have, uh, a piece of legislation, a resolution for, um. Uh, Mr. Sappington actually needs it for our city employees who are getting off the one twenty-five plan.
Yeah, you should have copies.
We, we, we actually have this on the books though already, don't we? We just have to.
Yeah.
Analyze it.
Uh, it's just a renewal. It's to, it should be a resolution of renewal. It's the sample resolution they gave us and then. I believe touch that for our producers, but, um, the, it's to keep us IRS compliant, uh, where our employees can deduct the, uh, health. Health insurance premiums.
Get up, Cory.
So they can deduct health insurance premiums when it comes to tax time, so they pay for their health insurance and it's tax compliant. I think it's required by contract, so it's really more of a. Uh, motion to amend the agenda to add in, uh, resolution twenty-two fifty-two to the agenda?
So moved. Second.
Sadly, it's renewed every two years.
Okay. Um, Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, need someone to introduce resolution twenty-two fifty-two?
I'll introduce it.
Thank you, sir.
Certificate of resolution for the city of Nelsonville. Section one twenty-five premium only plan, planning December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. The undersigned secretary or principal of the city of Nelsonville, employer hereby certified. That the following resolutions were adopt, duly adopted by the board of directors of the employer, January first, two thousand twenty-two. And that such resolutions have not been modified or extended as of the date you're up. It resolved that the form of amended section one twenty-five cafeteria plan. Effective January first, two thousand twenty-two, presented to this meeting. Is hereby approved and adopted and that the proper officers of the employer are hereby authorized. And directed to execute and deliver the administrator of the plan, one or more counterparts of the plan. Resolved that the administrator shall be instructed to take such actions as are deemed necessary and proper. In order to implement the amended plan and to set up adequate accounting. And administrative procedures to provide benefits under the plan. Resolved that the proper officers of the employer shall act. As soon as possible to notify the employees of the employer. Of the adoption of the amended plan by delivering to each employee a copy of the summary description of the plan. In the form of the summary plan description presented to this meeting, which form is hereby approved. The undersigned further certifies that true copies of the adoption agreement, plan document, and summary, summary. Plan description approved and adopted in the foregoing resolutions are attached herewith. Newly enacted by council on first reading the twenty-fifth day of October, two thousand twenty-one.
Any council discussion? Motion to adopt?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
All right. So we're off to the city manager's report. Mr. Frank?
Great. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for getting phase three and the lift station stuff. I know that was a really big deal. This is a reminder to everybody, phase three of the sewer plant, that's where we're searing unsourced areas within the city. That was the one that was going to include Dunville, but no longer includes Dunville. But uh, there's also some uh, big infrastructure improvements in there in our lift stations. Um, this one will be yanked out of that project now since the other one, but uh, we have lots of lift stations like in this very same condition right now that we basically are fighting, beating with it every day. So that'll be good stuff if we get it. With that said, thank you for the lift station as well. Um, if there's any questions on that, please let me know. Right now it's running okay. Um, there's a lot of uh, epoxy and pipe straps holding that together right now and rubber pieces, so it's doing well. That said, the paving on, switching gears to the waterline stuff, the paving on Mill Street and Cotner will take place on November ninth and tenth, weather permitting. So, and then after that will be curbs and uh, some cleanup actions at Mill Street will be done. Uh, we haven't figured out exactly what we're gonna do on Saint John Street for paving, so um, I originally planned on paving Saint John after they were done, however, we found out that Columbia Gas is gonna be coming in there next year and digging it up to install the gas line, so it doesn't make any sense to pave it. However, the asphalt that's up there now, a lot of it crumbled with this existing construction and needs to be repaired. With that said, our engineer's gonna get with EPA folks and see if they will uh, fund just to repair the asphalt that was destroyed. And then after AP or Columbia Gas gets done, then we can overlay it properly. So more to come on that one. Then uh, sticking with the water lines, the, they're going down Lockin Street now. They're gonna, uh, they actually bored underneath railroad tracks today, so they're gonna install that hydrant down at Polly. We'll be able to put the new, or put a uh, drinking fountain, but a spigot for folks to fill up down there at the field that's been a hot item. The old water line was down there, it was crushed, so there was no way to do it before, so now we'll be able to get water back down there for the folks. And then of course, a hydrant on that side of the tracks is a big deal as well. They have finished up, are going to be finishing up the end of Walnut Street. I think it's done already, but um, they put the new water line down there as well, and then the other little pieces they had here and there uh, is all touched up. The water meters are being installed as we speak. They're all over the place right now. The, I can't give you a schedule when they're gonna be where, because literally they're all over the place and they're trying to rectify that, so they'll be able to let you know by street what the ones that are coming down. Um, for some folks, this could be very uh, traumatic. If they've been getting free water for years and years and years, they're now going to get billed for what they use. So the new meters are extremely accurate and um, could, could raise some people's uh, bills. Only because they're gonna be able to water they're receiving. So the second piece of that, and I've been talking about this quite a bit, but after the first of the year, once that's all settled in and their software is uh, tied in with Tanner software and their billing software, all of our citizens will have access to uh, an account. They can either log in on through the computer or through an app, is my understanding, in monitoring water usage. The new meters will give four readings a day back to the water office, and uh, it'll be able to track if there's a potential leak, you know, that there's a steady flow of water, you know, that's super soft, uh, that'll notify you guys if you set it up to notify you. You have to go in there and tell it that you wanna know about that stuff. And um, hopefully save a lot of water loss and also save uh, a lot of folks' money with leaks. That way they can get ahead of it before they find out two weeks later and uh, when they get their bill. So that's good news. The, there's a lot of stuff coming up in the next two weeks. It should um, we get yes or nos on a lot of the grants we've been applying for. With that said, uh, the four hundred thousand for paving plus the four hundred thousand for our grant to do paving, so a total of eight hundred. That is um, I believe the second week in November, that's gonna be decided. And then there's also, the state three that we just talked about will be, at the end of November will be decided. Then um, there's one more on there too, but I'm losing it right as we speak. The other one that uh, you guys haven't asked about for a while is the river main going underneath the Hocking River. That was the number two on the county, so we turned all those in for special hospital one sixty-eight ARPA bunnies. And uh, that went through the county engineer. The county engineer ranked our waterline project as number two in the county and needed that. They've started notifying counties, but haven't notified them all yet, but they started notifying counties. And it looks like the top two at a minimum are getting done at the counties, but we haven't been notified yet, so I don't wanna count the the chickens before they hatch, so, but it does look like they're gonna come in, that's five hundred thousand. And there's no match on that. That would be a hundred percent funding through county engineer using ARPA funds. I need to get that line.
Yes.
Yeah. And uh, that is all I have pending any more questions.
Okay, I don't hear any questions coming your way, so, Mr. Frank, I appreciate the in-depth and detailed update as normal. Kinda getting spoiled, I don't hear any, um, anyway, um, we'll move it on. So uh, we are on to the good to be order. Um, I would like to start off tonight, I'm gonna kinda cheat. Um, I'd like to reiterate the Nelsonville Food Cupboard uh, fundraising event Saturday, October thirtieth, from twelve to three at Nelsonville Elks. Please come out and support them. They do amazing things in our community without any praise whatsoever. You don't even know they're going at half the time. So um, also, I would like to remind the people, um, you know, when you come to the city and you speak to our employees, uh, they are people too. Um, I've been hearing that our employees have been a little disrespected at times, being yelled at. Um, sometimes maybe, and it's something that I have learned here recently, that sometimes maybe you need to take a.